This meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have a seat. Please begin with the roll call.
Anthony Lipsansky.
Over here.
Kenneth Hall.
Over here.
Ronnie Almond.
Over here.
Trevor Stone.
Here.
Ronald Glassick.
Here.
Judith Haldeman.
Here.
Jason Donahue will be absent. Julia Kutzler.
Here.
Mayor Anthony Prestash.
Present.
Moving on to hearing a person's present. State your name and address. If you have any comments to make, come forth. And when was to speak? So we'll move on to Resolution Number Eight Twenty Three.
Resolution, adoption of Resolution Eight Twenty Three will allow the Northampton Fire Department to apply for a Lehigh-Northampton County Local Share Account Grant to purchase Panasonic Tough Books for the fire apparatus. The amount of the grant application will be fifty-two-thousand, four-hundred dollars. Any overage the Fire Department has offered to pay the difference.
What is the opinion of council?
So moved, as long as they agree to pay the, anything over the cost, yeah?
That, that, they had offered that, yes.
Let's stick 'em up on it.
And is there any matching that this grant that we have matched so much of it?
No.
No, okay.
Do you have a second?
Is there a motion?
Yeah.
Motion to correct.
Motion made by Judy Haldeman.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glassick. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I abstain.
You abstain?
For reasons.
Moving on to Resolution Number Nine Twenty Three.
Resolution Nine Twenty Three will allow Officer Joseph Britt to apply for a Monroe County Local Share Account Grant to purchase two vehicles for the detective's use. The amount of that application is eighty-nine thousand, one-hundred-seventy-four dollars.
What is the opinion of the council?
I make a motion for Officer Britt to apply for the account grant purchase.
I got it.
Well, it would be easy for you to say. Repeat that. Humming, humming.
Motion made by Mr. Zaman. Do you have a second?
Si- 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 second?
Okay, who wants it?
Nope.
Trevor said it actually before.
Senior, senior now.
Sorry.
Second by Mr. Lipsansky.
Thank you, sir.
All those in favor?
Uh, question?
Aye.
Oh, question. Sorry, forgot your question.
Is there any matching funds that are required by us on that one?
No.
No?
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
No, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, moving on to approval to appoint junior council member.
At the last council me- meeting, Mason Smolinak was present to introduce himself as a candidate to serve as a junior council member. He met with the committee of the council and they found him quite adequate.
That's what everybody wants to hear.
Yeah, adequate. We could've come up with a better word on that one.
We'll make it up to Mason, don't worry.
What is the opinion of the council?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Ms. Haldeman?
No, no, wrong, I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Glassick?
Third.
Question? No questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Just a late question that just flashed through my head. Is there a brochure pamphlet book that explains his duties and what's expected?
It's on the PSAB website. I may have provided you with one if I was remiss in that. Come and see me and we'll bring you one out. It lists all his responsibilities.
Yes, that's what I'm, okay. Thank you.
I just have a late question for Mason. Are you sure you really want to join this?
Adequate does not completely, does not at all identify him and I think Leroy knows that too. We all found him to be a very good young man and an excellent candidate for this job.
Thank you.
So we're moving on to item eight, swearing.
Swearing.
That's an excellent.
That's what she was gonna read.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Go ahead. You're right.
No, no, we just want to get out of camera vision.
Item number eight.
At this time, Mayor Prestash will swear in junior council member Mason Smolinak and he can take his seat.
Come on, Mason.
Yeah.
Look how we got people out of their seats. Camera's over there. Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I, Mason Smolinak.
I, Mason Smolinak.
Of thirteen-sixteen Barrington Drive.
Thirteen-sixteen Barrington Drive.
Northampton, Pennsylvania.
Northampton, Pennsylvania.
Being duly appointed.
Being duly appointed.
To the office of junior council person.
To the office of junior council person.
In and for.
In and for.
The borough of Northampton.
The borough of Northampton.
Northampton County, Pennsylvania.
Northampton County, Pennsylvania.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will.
That I will.
Support, obey, and defend.
Support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
That I will.
That I will.
During my term of office.
During my term of, uh, term of office.
Perform the duties of said office.
Perform the duties of said office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
So with that, you give up your first. At any time, at any time there's a missing seat, you are, you should be sitting up front here. If not, then you can't. So here today, Jason's not here, you can sit up front here. Okay, you set me up here, you'll spit through. He may have already done that.
Leroy promised me that he was a real worker and we all still work for you.
Oh, yes.
Ooh, this one gets a little bit on me, I take.
It's adequate, you take that seat.
There you go.
Get him at the source.
So you just keep boring through when people say, stop you when you're, you just keep boring through when people stop you from reading your own.
That's right. We'll move on to item number nine on the agenda. Consider certification of the police pension fund.
The minimum municipal obligation for the twenty-twenty-four police pension plan has been calculated to be one-hundred-sixty-five-thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars. It is anticipated that the state aid for this plan will be one-hundred-twenty-two-thousand, two-hundred dollars. The difference will be made up with the overage of state aid to the other two pension plans.
What is the opinion of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Stowe.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lipsansky. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider certification of the non-uniformed defined benefit pension plan.
The minimum municipal obligation for the twenty-twenty-four non-uniformed defined pension plan has been calculated to be zero. It is anticipated that the state aid for this plan will be sixty-five-thousand, eight-hundred dollars.
What is the opinion of the council?
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Haldeman.
No.
Ms. Haldeman, second by. Glassick, Mr. Glassick. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider certification of the non-uniformed defined contribution pension plan.
The minimum municipal obligation for the twenty-twenty-four non-uniformed defined contribution pension plan has been calculated to be thirty-eight-thousand, three-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. It is anticipated that the state aid for this plan will be sixty-five-thousand dollars. The overages for the three pension plans will be divided on a prorated basis between the police and non-uniformed defined benefit pension plans to defer future costs.
Thank you. The opinion of the council?
Motion to approve.
By Mr. Stone. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Almond. Question? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider the request of the Greater Northampton Area Chamber of Commerce.
The Greater Northampton Area Chamber of Commerce, in conjunction with the street fair to be held on Saturday, September ninth, twenty-twenty-three, is requesting the use of the portable van trailer and the portable restroom. Historically, this is made available at no cost to the chamber.
Thank you. The opinion of council, please?
Let it be written. Second.
So, motion made by Mr. Lipsansky, second by Mr. Glassick. Do you have a question?
Oh, question. Is there a rain day, Tony, or is it just Saturday?
Saturday, rain or shine.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I apologize to the mayor. I should never address the Ms. Tony.
That's okay, no problem, no.
Sorry.
Fine by me, councilman.
The ayes have it. Consider the request of Upper McConge Township.
Upper McConge Township has requested the use of the portable van trailer on Saturday, October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three. The trailer will be delivered on the Friday before and would be returned on the following Monday, which would avoid any overtime cost. As a nonprofit, we would charge them a hundred-and-fifty-dollar delivery and removal fee. They would be required to provide a certificate of insurance naming the borough of Northampton as additionally insured.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Glassick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hall. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So now, item number fifteen on your agenda is the report from committees, starting administration and finance with Mr. Hall.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, the timeline for the twenty-twenty-four bid preparation will be provided with the September twenty-first council report. Northampton County is sponsoring a household hazardous waste collection on September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. The event will be held in Northampton Community College and drop-off will be of my appointment only. Contact information is listed in the borough's website and report.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Ms. Haldeman with Building Land of Recreation.
Thank you. The pool closed on Saturday, August nineteenth, for the season and everyone seemed to feel that we had one of our better years. It appeared that we had a leaking water supply line to the police administration building. However, following an exploratory excavation, nothing was found and the system seems to be working as it should be. Mr. Broke has been, Mr. Brokes has been contacted by the organizers of the Equinox Festival and they have decided to withdraw their request and reapply to conduct a festival for the spring equinox in twenty-twenty-four. He has not yet received a written request. End of report.
Thank you, Ms. Haldeman. Moving on to the code and police, Mr. Stone.
Yes, thank you. Now that we are in our fourth year of rental registration inspection ordinance, all units that have not been inspected since the initial inception are now due to be inspected. Responses have been exceptional. Mr. Brokes is pleased to see that different officers within the police department are preparing grant applications. They seem to be diligent in their work and this ultimately will be beneficial to the borough. End of report.
Mr. Stone, fire and health by Mrs. Almond.
Thank you. After a summer hiatus, the Board of Health will meet on Tuesday, September twenty-ninth at seven PM. The nineteen-ninety-nine fire, I'm sorry, the nineteen-ninety-nine freightliner fire apparatus was sold to a city in Minnesota by the name of Brewster for seventy-thousand dollars. End of report.
Thank you. Public Works and Sewer by Mr. Glassick.
Thank you. Uh, the pre-bid meeting was held on Thursday, August thirty-first, two-thousand-and-twenty-three, at the Twenty-First Street Pump Station. There were approximately twelve prospective bidders in attendance, as well as Tom Duffy of Gilmore and Associates, representative of the Was- wastewater treatment staff, and Mr. Brokes. This will be opened online and the deadline is by ten AM Tuesday, September nineteenth, two-thousand-and-twenty-three. Following review from our engineers will make the recommendation. In the area of Anthony Drive, a collapsed storm sewer pipe was discovered. The crew is working to make these repairs. Dibbert Alley was reconstructed and paved during the week of August twenty-eighth. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Glassick. Moving on to reports from council members, however, I would like to start this with Mayor Prestash.
Thank you. As you just heard, we have street fair coming up this Saturday, weather permitting. It's the Thirty-Fourth Annual Street Fair and it promises to be a really well-presented event. There are over a hundred vendors. We have ten-plus food vendors. There'll be plenty of things for the kids, from rock climb to petting zoo. Horwith and Live and Guth are bringing trucks in for the kids to climb on. It's gonna be set up a little differently. The band show will be down at the Gin Mill end and the triaxal trucks provided by Live and Guth and Horwith will be blocking Main Street at the north end. So there'll be Roxy Tours, bands, and a lot of excitement throughout the day. So please come down and visit. It's a great way to get your Halloween, Thanksgiving shop, uh, Christmas shopping done early with a lot of great vendors there and just a well-done job by the, the chamber pulling this together. So I hope for the effort they put into it that we can have a successful, rain-free street fair. Also, I've recently become a Lehigh Valley Ambassador. I encourage all of council to join this project by Discover Lehigh Valley. Just go on Discover Lehigh Valley Ambassador Program. It's a free course. It's simply to promote tourism and your local regional area. There's no charge for this. It's a fun thing to do and as council people and representatives of Northampton on the government side, we should be promoting Northampton all the same. There's one-thousand-ten ambassadors already and they just opened up recently and our good friend Alec Michaels and his great crew at Discover Lehigh Valley are always promoting all of us in the Lehigh Valley, I must say. For years, Northampton was always in the corner of the county but kind of forgotten, but thanks to Alex and his, his fine staff, the street firm was mentioned on the website. Northampton is very prevalent in a lot of their communications and it's great to know that we're soundly a part of the valley, thanks to Discover Lehigh Valley's efforts. So let's be part of that also. Again, no charges. Go on the Discover Lehigh Valley website, look for the ambassador program and just take the course and everything else is done from there. So I encourage everyone to take a look at it and that's all I have. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
I only have one. As the last meeting I was at, Leroy, did you find anything or get an update on that PPL, the light at Twenty-First? You said you hadn't heard from him.
No, I, we have discovered a new approach. We lost our contact on there and our new approach seems to be working because we reported the light out on Smith Lane and they came today and replaced it.
Gotcha.
Uh, I have not heard anything on replacing.
Okay, just unfortunately getting lighter sooner, earlier, uh, major intersections.
Yeah, plus we want to hang a Christmas light up there.
Yeah, there you go. Um, other than that traffic's still, uh, with the bridge being and the, and the detours are going there. Unfortunately, racing through the alleys and everything that goes with it. Not as bad, I don't think, as it had been, but, uh, but it has been jammed up. I was on the receiving end of it. I was blocked up all the way up to Fort Care. I couldn't even get off. I turned around and went down the sheets, gun through Copway to come back home because they're, got that jammed up really, really bad at times. I think they've been off there now. It was like a week straight they were doing that, but at least it's progressing. I'm glad to see that, but it's gonna be a long, hard journey unfortunately. That's all we got.
Well, thank you. Mr. Stone?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to, uh, thank Brian Wells for putting together the Fall's New, uh, Fall Newsletter. It's great out, honestly. It looks great and I'm hoping that people take the opportunity to read it and find out more about what's going on in the borough. So, uh, thank you for that. Congratulations to our new council, uh, junior council member, uh, Mrs. Smolinak. I missed your, uh, your representing yourself last meeting, uh, but I look forward to working with you guys going forward. I do have a small gripe though with the, uh, and maybe it only affects my, my family, but, uh, six-bag limit for the garbage. I mean, I brought it up before. I see everybody else having two, three, four bags.
One.
I find myself, one, I find myself sometimes having to hold garbage bags back to not go over that six-bag limit. I'm probably only five percent of the borough population that has to do that, right? However, I have to plan cleaning, like, you know, get a spring cleaner or something like that, not to go over this limit. So there can't be that many families that ha- that have, to have more than six bags in any given week. So I'm not really sure why we need to have a limit. It's not like people are gonna have more garbage because there's no limit. So maybe, uh, for next year going forward, we can look at that and renegotiate.
If I only have four bags, you can bring two down.
You know, and there, you have, you're having other offers. I have, I have neighbors that have one, maybe two.
There you go.
But, uh, you know, I, I don't think they'll like, you know, and I'm not putting it in my car to go deliver to your house. It will take your offer.
There you go.
And maybe I'll get like one of those red wagons and I'll just, you know, walk it up to your house or something like that. So I do appreciate it. Uh, that's all I have and, and a report.
Well, thank you for being so entertaining.
The chief lives out at the street, I'm sure his will.
Hey, Mrs., Ms. Haldeman?
Well, first of all, we got a Mrs. Haldeman, we got a Mr. Haldeman.
Judy, Judy.
I'm just gonna answer to anything.
I'm just gonna go, Judy.
Are you?
D.C. Sam.
Wrong so much.
That's so people can figure it out.
They can figure it out. I'm just gonna, I'll just answer to anything. We can just say that in public here. Um, I, Mr. Councilman Glassick stole my thunder. I was gonna absolutely offer my sidewalk. I am not a, you know.
No, do that. For the non, for the non-food garbage bags, I may put them in my car and start delivering them.
You know, we.
If you don't mind, yeah.
I don't mind. No, we're talking a deal here. We have.
Oh, wait, I gotta pay for it?
No, no, not, not, not.
I'll pay now, I'll pay the dollar, it's garbage bag as it is.
Let's move this ship.
Yeah, okay. So I, I only have two things. Um, I, I, I received a phone call from Reverend Maraz asking me to share a message again, um, that he is so tickled pink with the butterfly, garden. Uh, I always, we, I think we changed the name of it every time we talk about it. But anyway, not only did he want to shout out a thanks to Public Works and everybody that supported him in his endeavor to get this up and coming, he also told me he had his scooter down there and has been approached by, um, several people who have expressed a lot of joy in seeing it and, and interest in the flowers that are there and wanting even more information about what they can plant to also get these, um, get the butterflies to come on over to, to their house too. So again, a big, I, I, I guess I'm gonna say a big thank you from Reverend Maraz to, to everybody in the borough for all their support of him. And again, we're gonna laugh and say, anybody that ever met Reverend Maraz knows you don't say no to that gentleman and it has nothing to do with his age. He is more tenacious than anyone I have ever met and that's saying something. Um, and my last one is just to give you guys a heads up, although I was hoping to bring pictures and, um, they, they weren't, the ones that I have aren't great, so I'm gonna try again. But the Boy Scout project, um, the young man who came in here, Caden Rosanies, has sent me a text that his project is, is done. Um, I asked if there was gonna be any kind of ceremony, but I, I guess because again, he, his Boy Scout troop is not local, I think they're still kind of working on some things. But, so first of all, take a, take a, pop on down there and take a look at it. I think that there's some really nice, um, bricks and, and I was told that that is still an option. People can still purchase them. So just like all the people that supported the mayor's project with the banners, um, this supports, I think EMS, ambulance, and police, um, down by the Fire Department. And it really is, it is a nice project. It's, it's not, right at this point, very noticeable because it's just bricks in the ground. There's not any type of, uh, kind of, uh, level, a higher level, um, thing to kind of catch your eye, but it is there. Um, and, uh, I will also share with you when he's, his court of honor is, is being arranged. So not that, again, it won't be here, so unfortunately I don't think we'll be able to attend, but maybe we can in some way acknowledge him since he did do a project for the borough after he gets that, his Eagle Scout. Cause again, I think everybody's probably read, you know, being an Eagle Scout, while it's happening more and more, it is still quite a, uh, quite an accomplishment. And when you look back at the people who have become Eagle Scouts, it's a, quite a mighty list of names. So, um, you know, that's a good shout out to Caden. I think he did do a good job and, and had people working there and getting it done and sometimes on some of the hottest days of the, of the summer. So, uh, just take a, take a peek at that when you get a chance, if you'd like. And that is it for me tonight. Thank you. Oh, welcome to Mason too. Congratulations. I look forward to, to working with you and seeing that smiling face. Thank you.
Thank you, J.H.
Very good. Okay. Very keen.
It's tough when there are two Judys.
Yeah.
Thank you. We'll start Mr. Lipsansky on this side.
Oh, thank you. Yes?
Go ahead.
Someone you hood.
I think it was the mayor. He whistled.
No, he likes you.
Yeah, oh boy.
Tell that in it.
Nothing to say about his good taste. I would like to, since for the last eighteen years, I've been hammering the same nail, meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting. And I bet no one can think of the address I'm going to refer to. How did you know? Have, have you ever been down there lately? It is a vast improvement over what it used to be. So I would like to give the property owner, uh, well done. We, we've had our edges and our court dates and other things and that, but hopefully, the spirit of becoming a good neighbor and a clean neighbor has taken hold and drawn fruit. The property is really, really nice. Now, if we can get work done in the house, that would improve the property half again. But I'd like to tell the people that I have been hammering on this for, for eighteen years, it's finally beginning to look like a house that just needs a little sprucing up and painting. And that is a far cry from what it looked like before. So congratulations. I can't recall his name, but, uh, I, I think he's doing a good job and I think he should be given kudos and I believe, uh, he would appreciate it coming from me because I have been the echo in his ears for a long time. Mason, uh, you're gonna see what this is all about. Now, it might not be what you think it is, but what you see is what it is. It's a lot of serious topics. But what you see is what it is. It's a lot of, uh, serious topics that are talked about. And every now and then we get in a. Ah, a happier mood and we discuss things, uh, on a, on a different level. You have to because if you don't, you're gonna go nuts. And, uh, Trevor and Keith are, yeah. I missed the memo. I do have a colored shirt just like that at home and I am sorry that I did not put it on because.
It's the after Labor Day shirt.
Yeah, it was one of my selections, but I, I chose this color. Uh. As was spoken about by, uh, J H.
Yeah, calling J H.
The butterfly plot down on Canal Street, uh, if, if no one has yet gone by. It's something that you would really be impressed by. It, it's very nice. Not only is it nature, but the way it's described as a, as an eye pleasing environment. It's nature. Everything is in a place and every place has a thing. But it's a very, very nice place to look at, come to admire. Some people may go there to meditate. It will, it will fill that in their n- needs. And, uh, Mr. Jerry Maraz. We have known each other and you might not believe this, but I had hair when we first knew and got introduced. He is a driving force. A lot of the things that I believe and I have respect for. He placed there. He sowed the seed and the seed has germinated. He is a great guy. If you've never spoken to him. It, it, it would behoove you to speak to him because he's very knowledgeable about many, many topics. So thank you Reverend Maraz. And I yield back the balance of my time to the chair.
Thank you. Mr. Glassick.
Thank you. A couple of things, I guess, get out of the work first. Um, congratulations, Mason. Looking forward to having another junior councilperson on board. Uh, I know you're, you're gonna do a great job and so I'm looking forward to having you just get your feet wet right now. I know it's a, a big change at first, but. Feel free to always voice your opinion, throw your ideas out. There's no idea here that's not a good idea. Uh, we may pass it, we may not, but at least it's a great idea to come up with it. Think outside the box also. Um, again, I wanna thank the Father Maraz or Reverend Maraz, whatever he goes by, J H., you know. Um, but he did a great job down there. It's really, you know, nice to see that. I am looking forward to the street fair, so thanks for bringing that up about that, Mayor. Um, now some of the negative things. Leroy, the sidewalk at five eighty-one East Tenth Street is still stone. Uh, there's more grass growing in it. It, it needs to get done. I mean Verizon, RPPL, whoever ripped it up. It's been a year, a little over a year now that they ripped a sidewalk up and they can't put concrete over it. Doesn't seem like that's something that they should not be able to get done. Um, do we ever have anything on our light savings? You know, from putting the LED lights throughout the town? Do we ever get a dollar amount?
Nope.
What is our lower cost?
If you look at the, uh.
I just did.
The AP at fourteen thousand dollars, that's about what we normally paid. We didn't save a nickel. We went through all of that trouble. They replaced all the lights with LEDs and we didn't save a dime.
Well, I don't understand that because.
I don't either.
You know, it, it has to be a cost saving. We didn't pay anything for them.
No, no.
Uh, and we didn't do any of the work, but it still was a hassle for them to, you know, for us to go keep on chasing them. I would like to look into that a little bit more, why we wouldn't have better savings. You know, you talk about LED being so more efficient. And if our dollar amount didn't go on, I do think that I, I'm going back to our budget and dollar amount. I thought it came down about a thousand dollars, but, uh, you know. It should be a lot more than that.
No, I was looking for two thirds. I, I just think, I was looking for it to come down by thirty-three percent.
Yeah.
I didn't budget nearly enough.
Okay.
Uh, but we pay for that with liquid fuel, so we're, we'll be all right.
Okay. Uh, again, kudos to the assistant borough, Brian Wellsco, for the fall newsletter. It was outstanding. I really do appreciate that. Um, I think it's great. If you didn't see it yet, and we are doing some print hard copies for those senior citizens or even people that don't have the internet access. And don't, you know, have the ability that we're gonna do hard copies. Uh, we're gonna try to get that paid by cer- certain sponsorships. So that's what we're out there doing now. So again, Brian, thank you for your leadership in that and stepping up. Um, I wanna send a thank you out to the sewer treatment plant. There's three, three gentlemen that are working their tails off to really hold that together. You know, you're talking a twenty-four hour operation, seven days a week in our borough, that when you go to flush your toilet, you don't, you take for granted. And there's three gentlemen only working there. We lost three individuals and we're down to three workers. So you gotta realize what they're holding together and that's not blowing smoke up anybody or flushing the toilet is no pun intended, but literally they're doing a great job. So I'd like to spend a kudos out to them. Um, did we ever receive a trash rebate from the Republic for the days that we had the debacle? I know Megan sent them a bill or was going to send them a bill back.
We are currently holding that as a, like a ransom note.
And how much is that, if I may ask?
Uh, I think it was around twenty-five thousand.
Cause we paid a bill of eighty-eight, eight twenty-eight last, in the month of August when I looked over the bill, so.
Yep.
Republic is an average monthly thing?
That's it. That's the amount. Eighty-eight, eight. There was a twenty-eight dollar fee on there because there was one dumpster. They had to make a second trip on.
Okay. Um, and again, thank you Leroy and Brian for sending out the budget sheet. I know that this is probably the toughest time of the year to. You know, talk about defined pensions, talk about budgets, talk about hiring, talk about getting ready for the winter, but, you know, the budget thing is important. If we're gonna make, make money in the next new year or look to make sure we don't have to do a whole lot of adjustments. And may I, Madam President, may I go over the numbers and ask the questions now instead of at the end?
Sure.
Since I have it right in front of me. So the waste management thing, I noticed has dropped down and again, we had a very dry summer. So we were averaging, if everybody remembers, when I used to talk about the sludge that we haul out, was eighteen to nineteen thousand. The last two bills for the month of August was fourteen thousand and thirteen thousand. So I think it's a little bit better. Uh, again, that all is dictated by the amount of water and rain we get and pull off the river and then we get more sludge and then we have to haul that out. So I think it's important that people know how much goes in through that stuff again. I hate the subject to talk about flushing the toilets, but you don't realize on how much goes through that and how much money it costs a borough to keep that running. Just for that simple task. And that's not even the water. We didn't talk about our drinking water, which is state of the art in our facility up there. If you look at our water treatment plant that they're putting a, uh, new, another reservoir in or another tank to hold more, holding tank for more water. Because of the population that's in our borough. Um, if I'm correct, is it fifteen thousand gallon or thirty?
Three million.
Three million gallon.
Three million gallon.
Three million gallon tank. And if you ever get a chance to go up there by Eagle Point and see where our reservoir is. That three million dollar new facility is just gonna be amazing to have two tanks that hold three million gallons of water for our, for our borough. And that one that we can drain out, make sure it's, it's safe and clean and then backfill with the other one. So we have that now ability. So there's a lot of things that are behind the scenes that I don't think people see that happened in our borough. And there's good, bad and indifferent, but I do think there's still a lot of bright side to our great borough here on North Hampton. So hopefully you're proud of it. End of report.
Well, thank you. Mason, I will get to you. So be thinking. Miss Almond.
Thank you. So I recently had new rear shocks put on my car, which, um.
Are you driving on Main Street?
Remotes me to ask Leroy, have we heard or received any updates on the speed bumps up on Turable Road?
Pendot.
I know. He said, um.
They, they, uh, they are not all that responsive. I sent, I sent the last, I think I told you this story already. I sent a letter to the governor and he sent it to the District Five manager that he works out of Allentown. And all I got was a letter with a song and a dance about how they're limited funding and this, that and the other thing. I bump over that when I go up to see my son. I can't make them fix their own streets.
Okay, I was just wondering. And I am still on the lookout for property for our fire department training. So if anybody out there has any property that you're not using and willing to donate, please let me know so that, um, we can have the fire department. Do the training that is required. And the street fair, I will not be able to attend on Saturday. I'll be out of town, but all those that attend, I hope you have a great day. And I hope it's wonderful weather that you're able to hold the street fair. And thank you to Brian, the assistant borough manager, for your efforts in providing the newsletter. It's very successful. Thank you. Very informative. And congratulations, Mason. I look forward to working with you.
Good one.
Thank you.
Thank you. I still promise to get back to you, Mason. Uh, I have two issues that I'd like to address. Um, one is, I don't know if it would be for the police department or for our borough road crew. I would like someone to look into the intersection of East Eighteenth and LaBock Avenue. Going north on LaBock, turning right onto East Eighteenth Street. They're parking so close to that intersection. That only one car can get in and it's very, very dangerous. I, I don't know if there's anything. Maybe you could paint that yellow line further so that they're not right on top of the intersection. They're right on top of LaBock and Eighteenth. Uh, it's, it's mostly a problem when the N A A has sports that are going there. So, and also I'd like for us to look into having the department heads or the managers come in and address council with their needs. What they would like before the budget is, uh, compiled. Uh, I think that we need to have the managers have input into the budget. Uh, we have done this in the past. This is not anything that's new. We started with one manager tonight. Um, possibly our police chief, our fire chief, the whole, every manager needs to come in. Executive session, least a half hour. Uh, let's hear from them and see what their wants and their needs are. Um, that's all I have. Yes.
Yeah, I, I did have two other things. And one, did we hear anything about the, um, what was the solstice, uh, music thing that we were talking about?
Equinox.
Equinox.
Equinox, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we just read that.
And, and I do wanna make it public that we, I apologize as a council person that we didn't go to the most important person. We talked about some of the security. And that is our police, police chief, Mr. Uh, Chief Kadingo. We discussed it outside the meeting last week or the last meeting. And we didn't bring it up and he made a point, a point like, why won't we check with them? So again, my apologies to you because honestly, that is the first person you should have checked with about that. So I didn't know that they canceled. So thank you for the update on that.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Mason, what are your thoughts?
As of now, I'm very thankful to be here. I'm really looking forward to working with all of you. And on top of that, I have, um, met with, uh, like vice president of volunteer club for my school. And I'm looking forward to making a re- like connection between, uh, the borough council and them.
Mm-hmm.
So if they could go to some of our events that we're hosting here and like vice versa.
Oh, thank you. I'm really impressed with your, uh, military.
Thank you.
Yes. Auxiliary Air Force Cadet, Airman First Class. ROTC when you go to college. That's impressive, young man.
Have to let your color on.
Thank you, and we're proud to have you here. Mr. Manager.
What?
It's your turn.
Well, first of all, I'd like to welcome Mason. I, I think you're gonna really love this. I mean, whether it's good, bad or otherwise, it's never boring. Uh, I think, I think you'll be a fine addition. Uh, we look forward to your input and we'll look, you know, if you have any questions at any time, my door's always open. Just stop and say, hey, here I am. Uh, the timeline I had originally in, in the manager's report, I had reported that it would be available on the, uh, next council meeting. I figured I didn't wanna wait that long, so I put, put it together. Uh. The items on there from the department heads, the chairman of each committee. And I and the department head will meet, uh, to go over their requests. You know, once they have their budget requests, uh, written down, we'll take a look at them. Um, I got one, I got one already. I got it from the fire department. They are not asking for anything except. A pickup truck which can be purchased with the, uh, uh, the fire tax money. Uh, I didn't wanna let that out of the bag, but, uh, I did send a letter out to all department heads. Any purchases over two hundred dollars have to be pre-approved by me. Uh, it's not that we have a cash flow problem, but I don't want us to have one. So any, anything that they wanna buy over two hundred dollars will have to go through me. Um, I believe that's it. There's a football game on tonight.
Will there be, will there be any questions that, anything that was not purchased this year for the budget that we put first and foremost for next year moving forward?
Yeah, that can, that can be addressed.
I know there's a couple of areas that I thought that were on there that did not get done this year. So I think we just moving forward.
Yep.
Thanks.
Question, I, my apologies. I didn't hear that. So the, the chair of the committee that is associated with that department will get invited.
Me and Jason Crevis.
Okay, how about, who's gonna get Public Works? Oh, that's wrong. Okay, then, okay.
Who is it? Yeah.
I thought Public Works.
So I shared my agenda and the supporting documents with Mason. So as a junior councilperson, do they?
There was a, there was a packet up there.
Okay, alright.
Was it there? Look through your papers there, Mason.
Come on up.
Uh, it's not there. Well, if, you'll get one delivered before the next council. My apologies.
Do we have a fire report there? I didn't even look at that.
No, no, there wasn't a fire report.
Let's see, look at that.
Code.
No, no, what did it say? Fire police?
Yeah, fire police. No, she hasn't.
Yeah, you wanna read that fire police report behind?
Say again?
Okay, read it. How many, um.
Oh. Um, so for the month of twenty twenty, uh, July twenty twenty-three, we had, uh, twenty-three fire calls with, uh, eighty-three responders. And they worked for sixty-one hours and fifty-seven minutes.
Okay.
Then for the month of August, we had twenty fire calls with seventy-one responders and forty-nine hours and forty-two minutes.
All fire calls or were there accidents or assists? What, what was there?
Well, these are fire calls, motor vehicle accidents, water rescue. That's what it is.
Okay, there you go.
Yes, he had just a chance to get his feet wet.
Right.
And no, no.
This is the easy part. Mason, we, we throwing you on, this is easy. So how many motor vehicle accidents?
For which month?
Whichever month he wants to pick.
Have you fallen to EMS assist though?
EMS assist?
Uh, for the month of July, we had four calls with twenty responders, fourteen hours and forty minutes. And then for motor vehicle accidents during, uh, August, we had five calls, twenty-two responders, twenty-three hours and fifty-two minutes.
Very good. Thank you. You read your first report. Mr. Hall, you had another comment?
I do have one thing and that was, that's, that's the phone call. Uh, football game was canceled. Three o'clock Saturday.
An afternoon game?
Why?
Afternoon, well, cause I guess it's raining like, they, they couldn't have people in the stadium for a while there because of.
Lightning.
Lightning and whatever. So they pushed it to like seven forty, forty, which is only coming, but in the interim, they pushed it to three o'clock on Saturday.
That's like an old time.
Pocono Mountain or Pocono Mountain East? It was East Strouders.
East Strouders, so it's still a good hole they came down.
Yeah.
Okay.
Should've been happy going back.
Should've. He decided to go after, if you have nothing to do after the street fair, go and watch.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's, uh, moving on to approval to pay the bills. Approval to pay the bills.
Oh, all right. Council President, I would like to address on the agenda for today, item number sixteen.
There you go.
Pay the bills.
Motion made by Mr. Lipsansky. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Glassick. Any questions?
Already answered. Thank you.
That's funny. Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose. The ayes have it.
Hey, I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn made by Mr. Hall. Do I have a second?
Second.
Miss Almond? Ms. Alderman, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.